Chair Powell, you can go ahead and start. We are live.
A good morning to one and all. I call to order this special meeting of the University of Minnesota Board of Regents. A very good morning to everybody, and I want to thank all of those who are joining us via the livestream video. We have two items of business before us today. Before I turn to the agenda, though, I do want to add my voice to President Gabel's in condemning the acts of violence that took place at our nation's capital two days ago. This was nothing less than an assault on a democracy. And as we look ahead and begin to heal, it is my very fervent hope that we can elevate our vision to the things that unite us in common purpose. So now let's turn to our agenda. Our first item of business this morning is very, very exciting. We have before us for review and action, a resolution authorizing execution of final agreements related to BioMade. As the board will recall, at our October meeting, the board adopted a resolution endorsing the conceptual framework for the BioMade collaboration. Since that meeting in October, many individuals from across the university have worked tirelessly to reach the detailed terms and agreements that are before us today. With our approval, the university would become the ninth Manufacturing Innovation Institute host site, established and funded by the United States Department of Defense. The institute will focus on non-medical bioindustrial manufacturing, playing to the university's existing strengths in med tech and life sciences, and providing opportunities for discovery, for innovation, and for economic development that will benefit the state and the region and our country. This is a unique cooperative agreement with the Department of Defense. And as such, as you have already noted, the agreements are detailed, they're comprehensive, and they're complex. So we have several individuals to lead us through the discussion today. But before I turn to them, I know that President Gable would like to provide some introductory remarks. So President Gable, over to you.
Thank you, Chair Powell, Vice Chair, members of the board. Building on Chair Powell's remarks, in mid-October, the Department of Defense announced its investment in a major new manufacturing institute called BioMade to be headquartered at the University of Minnesota St. Paul campus. This transformational commitment is poised to catalyze our state and our region in the ways that Chair Powell described. And as a top 10 $1 billion public research enterprise, the University of Minnesota is uniquely positioned to amplify this important new partnership. Members of the board, I want to call to your attention and remind you of the good news that we have developed a tremendous reputation in biomanufacturing, deservedly, over the last three decades through the Biotechnology Institute, as well as through distinct strengths in various areas, including genomics, computational biology, green chemistry, supercomputing, and others. These attributes, coupled with our state's headquarters economy and the region's already thriving life sciences and med tech industries, squarely position Minnesota as a leading bio-based manufacturing hub, attracting world-class talent, driving high-tech innovation, and creating dynamic new startups and importantly, new jobs. DOD has recognized Minnesota's existing strengths, and the opportunities for our economy and our workforce are enormous. According to the McKinsey Global Institute, the emerging bioeconomy is estimated to have a $2 trillion to $4 trillion direct economic impact annually across the globe within 20 years. With BioMade, we are at the forefront of this transformation promise, modeling the mid-1980s transformation of Austin, Texas as a high-tech hub after it was awarded a DOD grant in advanced semiconductor manufacturing, and the development in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, where the National Robotics Engineering Lab at Carnegie Mellon is catalyzing the robotics economy, among others. So too, BioMade will establish Minnesota as the central hub for the growing bio-based economy, which according to recent National Academy's report is thriving at $1 trillion annually today. Members of the board, we bring before you the agreements we've made with BioMade. And as you will hear, our administration has been very busy since we were originally awarded this opportunity in October. These were complex negotiations that required the attention and creativity of many leaders and departments across the university. In particular, I want to express my sincere appreciation to those who are presenting here today, Vice President Kramer, Dean Forbes, Associate Vice President Volna, Senior Vice President Franz, the backroom work that many people across the university have done, our OGC agreements in HR, work with CBS Capital Planning, and many more. Many of these people are on standby today to answer your questions. So members of the board, as we pivot ahead and very much look forward to the public launch this spring and to advancing this transformational opportunity, I will turn it over to them for their presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, President Gable, and I think we'll turn it over now, if I understand the flow correctly, to Vice President Kramer.
Very good. Thank you, Chair Powell, members of the board, President Gable. I'm terrifically excited to begin this presentation and come back to you after the board authorized us to engage in these negotiations with BioMade. When I first spoke with you about this opportunity, I think I came with tremendous excitement. My excitement has only grown since then, and I'm terribly enthusiastic really to tell you about where we've arrived in the conclusion of our negotiations. So if I could have the first slide, please? For those of you who haven't been in 24/7 negotiations for the last two months, I thought I'd give a small bit of review on what a Manufacturing Innovation Institute is, and just remind you that these are public-private partnerships established from a program that was launched in the early part of the 2010s by the federal government. And the motivation essentially was a recognition that the United States as a whole had fallen behind globally in its manufacturing abilities and capacity in a number of really key areas, key emerging technological areas. And a recognition as well that economic security is national security. And on that basis, it was important to make investments and bring in the entire spectrum of players, public, private contributors to various manufacturing areas, and foster growth in those areas through some federal investment, but really through priming public-private partnerships that would bring in investment from all sectors and significantly advance these areas. The 15 that have been launched since the beginning of that program all continue to be operational. There were eight from the Department of Defense. Again, I'll say that because of this linking of economic security and national security, that was viewed as a very logical way to go about this. There were also six from the Department of Energy and one from the Department of Commerce. So they're established, as you see here, to support academia and industry for applied research on new technologies and design methodologies. And as President Gable said, in October, the Department of Defense announced an award to BioMade, which is a California nonprofit founded specifically to compete for this award with the sighting of BioMade, its headquarters, to be at the University of Minnesota, with a focus on bioindustrial manufacturing. So if I could have the next slide. So this puts us in good stead. You heard President Gable mention a couple of the existing Manufacturing Innovation Institutes. They are spread around the country. One of the most recent ones that is DOD and that President Gable mentioned specifically is in robotics. And it's right there at the top, on just to the right of the center. You see it listed as ARM Advanced Robotics Manufacturing in Pittsburgh. And it's a great one to call out because it has really catalyzed enormous growth in industries and advances in robotics in the greater Pittsburgh area. And I think for those who know something about robotics, Carnegie Mellon, of course, is a major player in this area. And that kind of synergy has had great economic effects on the region. I won't go through all of these various Manufacturing Innovation Institutes. We don't really need. But you can see the ones DOD-supported, and there are areas with the Department of Defense seal, and then the DOE ones, and finally Nimble, which is another biomanufacturing institute, if you will, that is housed at the University of Delaware, but that's the one that is focused on biomedical and medicinal purposes. So we are complementary to that, and there's a huge exciting range of industry associated with that. I think I'll note that the projections on the global impact of biomanufacturing range to $4 trillion annually in the next decade or two. And so this is why this has been identified as having a need in the United States to foster growth in this area. So if I could have the next slide. So BioMade's vision and mission, as articulated by BioMade itself, to build a sustainable domestic end-to-end bioindustrial manufacturing ecosystem. And their mission then is to enable that at all scales, and that's key. What's really been recognized as lacking in the United States is sort of mid-scale, scale-up technology that is available for startup industries to use to begin to take their products to actual market levels of manufacturing, also for the big big industry, which does have some large-scale, tank car scale manufacturing, but needs access to more basic research to begin to bring new product lines up. Competitive essentially de-risk investment by providing those facilities and infrastructure. And also, it has a workforce training aspect, which is terrifically important. We need, as universities in particular, we need to be developing the curricula, the training, the experiential learning that's going to grow the workforce, that's going to fulfill these manufacturing needs. So if I could have the next slide. So I call this a public-private partnership, and that is what it is. And in fact, you know, we often, we often focus on the fact that this is a DOD award, and we talk about the $87 million that the Department of Defense has committed for the first five years of this award. But actually, that's the minority of the capital that's going into BioMade. There's $150 million plus in cost-sharing commitments. That is money that is being given by the people who want to be partners, who want to be members of BioMade, to BioMade itself, which will be used as capital by that entity in order to fund research, in order to create its own facility here at the University of Minnesota, and pay the employees here at the University of Minnesota. So the public-private partnership, there's a lot of private, and of course, there's a lot of university contribution as well. Some truly impressive players on this slide. Obviously, locally, we have Cargill, which is critical to the state of Minnesota's economy. Our academic partners, where there will also be sites of BioMade, include the University of California, Berkeley, and Massachusetts Institute of Technology, a number of community colleges, and historically black colleges and universities, minority-serving institutions scattered around the country where much of the workforce development is intended to be focused and to help draw those students into graduate programs, perhaps at the University of Minnesota, that would be wonderful, and establish that pipeline that's going to be critical for biomanufacturing. And so I do want to emphasize the degree to which we are going to have an opportunity to engage with all of these various partners as we enable BioMade to pursue its work. Could I have the next slide? So the benefits to the University of Minnesota, to having BioMade cited here, and also to the state of Minnesota, certainly advancing the work of University of Minnesota researchers, you know, having a research institution, even though it's not an award to us, on our campus, there will be seminars that everyone will be attending. There will be opportunities for students to have internships. There will be discussions around lunch tables about biomanufacturing and the underlying technologies. So lots of opportunities, not only to talk with actual BioMade staff, but also the anticipated visitors from industry, from other institutions, who will be coming and doing projects in BioMade space. It will be a great opportunity for startup companies that will want to locate here because they want to take advantage of the facilities and the technology BioMade will be making available. I have shared IP in here. I think questions have come up in the past about what happens with the IP that might get developed here. So I'll touch on it very briefly, although happy to go in more detail when questions arise afterwards. The nature of a Manufacturing Innovation Institute model is that one goes to the Manufacturing Innovation Institute, BioMade, for instance, and says, "I propose working on this project," and if it's within the scope of the things BioMade wants to fund, then they negotiate with whoever that partner is, public, private, talk about whether there's background IP and how that will be licensed to enable the research itself. And then any new IP that's developed by whoever came to BioMade, if it is developed exclusively by that entity, it is exclusively their IP. However, they do offer a non-exclusive, royalty-free license to all the other members of BioMade. So A, that is a nice incentive to become a member of BioMade. And B, it really reflects this idea that we're at this early stage of biomanufacturing, such that a rising tide lifts all boats. So to the degree you make fundamental advances, it's going to help everyone within the membership consortium, if you will, advance their technologies as well, and everyone will benefit as a result. If BioMade staff contribute to the IP, then BioMade itself also has to share in whatever royalties might flow from licensing externally, but it's this internal, non-exclusive, royalty-free license that is how things are handled within the consortium of partners. An important aspect, as I've tried to emphasize, is that I really expect this to catalyze our state and our region's economy, not just through those startups, but through existing companies that are already expressed by either as suppliers or to learn from its technology, partner with them on the things that will get funded. We've had several conversations with Greater MSP, which essentially has people knocking down the door wanting to engage with BioMade and its leadership. We would expect certainly that this will create jobs within the Twin Cities and within the greater state of Minnesota. Obviously, BioMade itself is a non-trivial number of high-paying jobs that will be employees formerly of the University of Minnesota, although working in for BioMade and managed by BioMade. And so that's just the first drop in the bucket, I guess I would say. And with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Dean Valerie Forbes, to say more about some of the academic benefits and how the College of Biological Sciences played such a key role in this.
Thank you, Chris, and we can stay on this slide for the moment. I will pick up from Chris with the third bullet on this slide. Clearly, education and workforce development is a major component of BioMade's mission, and the Education and Workforce Development Team is currently drafting detailed plans for educational and research initiatives such as supported internships at BioMade Partners, speaker series, career fairs, et cetera. And we expect these programs will raise awareness of biomanufacturing career paths and job opportunities for students. I think students participating in internships and/or receiving hands-on training in biomanufacturing methods and innovations in our state-of-the-art facility, which will soon be built, is going to put them in a prime position to land jobs at one of the many BioMade-affiliated companies that Chris showed in a previous slide. As President Gable mentioned, the University of Minnesota already has a stellar reputation in biotechnology, largely due to our Biotechnology Institute, which was established back in 1983. And this reputation will be further strengthened by our headquartering BioMade and will contribute to raising the visibility of the Twin Cities as a biotech hub. And lastly, the soon-to-be-built microbial cell production facility will become the cornerstone of a new biotech district on the St. Paul campus and the first step in implementing the St. Paul campus framework plan. If you could go to the next slide, please. Okay, this is a reminder of what the new microbial cell production facility will look like approximately. And this will house both the expansion of our Biotechnology Resource Center as well as BioMade. The building will have a total square footage of around 83,000 gross square feet, and the BRC portion of the building is estimated to cost about $59 million, and the BioMade portion about $40 million. And CBS will be covering the debt service and operating costs for the building. Go to the next slide, please. When we met with the board in October, the board granted permission for us to proceed in principle with BioMade, and we, at that point, started with detailed negotiations. And that is essentially what a large group of us from across the university have been doing since October. In fact, it occurs to me that there are a lot of people, which I definitely owe a beer, as soon as we're allowed to do those kinds of things again. When we submitted the proposal to DOD and started the negotiations post-award, we were working with a model in which University of Minnesota would receive a sub-award from BioMade. And for various reasons, which we can discuss, it was agreed just before the holidays that a different kind of agreement should be pursued, largely to ensure BioMade's independence, which is a requirement of the DOD. It was further agreed that this change in model would be made in a way that was approximately financially neutral to the university. So with much effort on both sides, and many early morning and late-night email exchanges and Zoom calls across three time zones, we've managed to finalize the agreements and are ready to seek the board's formal approval. Next slide, please. So this slide provides an overview of the suite of agreements that have been drafted and negotiated. There is a secondment agreement shown in the green box, which describes the terms by which employees funded by BioMade will be hired as UOMN employees and seconded to do BioMade's work. These include administrative and clerical staff, as well as technical staff, to do the microbial production work. Because negotiations were taking time, and the DOD was eager for BioMade to start spending the award and get the institute up and running, we established an interim services agreement, showed in the lower-left box, that essentially made it possible for BioMade to start spending money. The Administrative Services Agreement, shown in the yellow box, describes the terms by which the university agrees to provide all of the services that BioMade needs to manage their full awards. So that's the 87.5 million from DOD, as well as the more than $150 million in additional matching funds provided by partners, plus any new awards that come in the future as the institute ramps up. We have two lease agreements, one to cover the terms of the space that we have allocated to BioMade immediately in the Cargill Building, and one that's yet to be drafted that will cover the terms of the lease of BioMade's portion of the new microbial cell production facility. And then the blue box in the upper left shows some numbers on the additional funding and cost share for University of Minnesota. And in a moment, Mike Volna will go into these details further. Slide 10, the next slide, please. Okay, so this slide provides, just to give you a simplified overview of all of the many people and units who were key to these negotiations on the university's side, and I hope demonstrates the thoroughness and due diligence with which we negotiated the terms of all of these rather complex agreements. Many of these folks are standing by today in case they are needed to answer any questions. And I just want to take this chance to say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you, team. We couldn't have done it without all these people." With that, I will turn over to Myron, who talked about risks and how these are being addressed, and then to Mike Volna, who'll walk you through some numbers.
Thank you, Dean Forbes. Let's go to the next slide. Good morning, Chair Powell, Vice Chair, and board members. Thank you for this opportunity. I think what I wanted to do here was to provide a little insight into the due diligence that went into the analysis of this opportunity for the University of Minnesota. You obviously can hear the excitement from Vice President Kramer and Dean Forbes. And my job is to take that excitement and run it through the process of due diligence to make sure that when we recommend this project for you, that we feel confident that the university is opposed to go through this process. I do, so there are two categories here. I wanted to talk a little bit about the risk categories that we've assessed, and then talk a little bit about the methods that we've gone through to assess those risks. And I think that's the key element here, is the analysis of risk. And any venture, whether it's a new venture or not, is always incumbent that there will be risk associated with that venture. And so our challenge here is to make sure we understand those risks. We analyze those risks and we figure ways to address those that are, we feel comfortable with. So clearly, one of the categories is personnel and working closely with Vice President Horstmann and his team to make sure that we have the proper oversight of the seconded employees. We have terminal obligation opportunities for those employees. We have negligence issues taken care of and confidentiality. This endeavor will involve a lot of different levels of confidential information of BioMade and from the Department of Defense. And we have to make sure we have agreements to take that into account. You know, the reputational issue clearly is one that Vice President Kramer and Dean Forbes talked about. This is a unique opportunity. We already have a great reputation in this particular area. We want to make sure that in the performance of this venture, that we meet those reputational expectations. That's critical going forward. So we have to make sure we have the commitment to follow through on these opportunities. You know, the operational issues are clearly something is a different kind of experience for the university. We had to make sure that we have the right personnel involved to monitor not only the personnel, but the leasing of the space, and also the building of a new space in the future. In just a minute, Vice President Volna will walk through some of the more financial information about how we are going to deal with the risk of the cost of building this facility and the costary obligations that the university will have as a result of entering into these obligations. You know, the suite of agreements that Dean Forbes talks, described and talked about just a few minutes ago, really show you the ways we've tried to address these risks by making sure that we have the right kind of agreements that take into place, take into account the issues that we need to deal with. You know, and we've also been doing a lot of extensive and conservative financial modeling that Vice President Volna will talk a little bit about that. But you know, a lot of the risks that we have, we've been able to mitigate through these agreements by having a dispute resolution process, by aligning the financial risk with the respective roles and responsibilities of BioMade and the university, by making sure we have sufficient personnel to engage in any unusual or different kinds of risks that we have not encountered before. We have the example here of the Export Control Officer. I mean, obviously, we want to make sure that if we get engaged in and export some of this technology or processes, and we've got the right people engaged to do that in a legally, in a legal manner. Clearly, we want to make sure that this endeavor is going to follow the key university policies. We're going to have this on the university campus in St. Paul. We need to make sure that the employees and the activities do align with university policies. We've made a requirement that BioMade have insurance to address some of the risks that are associated with BioMade and the manufacturing that will take place in these facilities. You know, but one of the things that, the last point I'll make, is that as President Kramer talked about, with all the other existing manufacturing and innovative institutes that have already been started, we do have some ability to assess sort of what's going to happen and what's how how these things develop with other kinds of MIIs, as we call them. So I think, we haven't done this in the dark. We've had an opportunity to look around the country, see how these things work, and I think that that gives us even more assurance that we can manage these risks. So with that, I'll ask Vice President Volna to kind of go to the next slide and walk through some of the financial modeling that we've been doing. Vice President Volna.
Thank you, Senior Vice President Franz. Board members, good morning. Before I dive too deeply into these numbers, I wanted to start by just providing you with a little bit of overview and sort of frame the focus of the financial analysis. In negotiating the financing for the BioMade agreements, we had two goals in our strategy. First was, we wanted to ensure that the secondment arrangement and the other professional services that we would provide would generate a sufficient cash flow to offset the cash flow from the facilities, because we knew that the facility's recovery was limited by the DOD award. Second, we wanted to ensure that overall, over time, the arrangement would achieve a net positive cash flow to the university, because that would minimize the budgetary and operating risks to the College of Biological Sciences and the university in general. So now I'll turn to the analysis itself that you see on this slide. The pro forma that you're looking at portrays the estimated financial implications of the agreements that you're considering today. Just so you know, those agreements cover a collection of services the university will provide to the new BioMade entity, primarily through the seconded employees, but also there are some other administrative services that we will provide. And all of them together will help BioMade stand up as a new entity. So when you look at the table that you have here, the top half of it represents the seconded and professional services. That top half of That top half of the table demonstrates how those professional and other administrative services will generate revenue and that that revenue will be the bulk of the cash flow, net of the costs of providing those services. This pro forma shows that the, over five years, the net cash flows from those services component are estimated to be about a positive 5.5 million. Below that, you'll see that the projections, the projections for the facility's cash flow, because of the terms of the DOD award, which limited our ability to fully recover facilities costs and Biomed's ability to finance specialized features of the building. We're currently estimating annual rent will be about $2.4 million over five years. You can see that it ramps in starting in year four because of the timeframe to build the facility. The estimated total cost for this facility, which includes debt service and operating costs, are about five, I'm sorry, are about 7.6 million. No question that that number will change once the building scope and the costs are finalized. We have a better understanding of the utilities requirements and so forth. As it pertains to the facility, the net cash flows then related to the building are projected to be about a negative 5.2 million over the, over the first five-year period. But as we said in one of our goals, the 5.5 million positive cash flow from up above in the services area is what we intend to use to finance that overall deficit, so that when you get to the very bottom of that schedule, what you see is that over a five-year period, the net cash flow for the, for the entity, for this endeavor is about a positive quarter million dollars over that five-year period. Next slide, please. So as I said, the pro forma shows that we have a net positive cash flow for this first five-year period. Myron mentioned the model is conservative, and that is true. It's thorough and it's very conservative. The assumptions and the estimates on service growth, other Biomed revenues, the facilities costs, and debt service structure have been very modest and very conservative. By doing that, this really builds resilience into the model and it gives us options that we can utilize to improve cash flows as we obtain a better understanding and as we get into the arrangement and as we make plans for how we structure the debt and so forth. And just to give you an example, our debt service projections on this are structured around our traditional 25-year fixed rate level payment debt service model with interest rates in the mid-4% range. We always do that just to be conservative. But when we get to the point where we have to actually issue debt to finance the long-term cost of this, we have options for how we want to structure that debt, which can improve the cash flows if needed. I think it's important for the board, as they're thinking about this, to understand that there are some financial risks in entering into these arrangements. In my mind, the biggest financial risk involves the facility. If, for example, the DOD were to terminate the cooperative agreement or Biomed were to fail or decide to move to another locale and vacate the building, the university would be on the hook to pay for the debt service and operating costs on that building on our own. We think we've mitigated those risks through the terms and conditions in the agreements, which provide us with certain legal protections against an abrupt end of the deal. In addition, the university will have several options to redeploy the facility, including leasing it to another external party, repurposing it for our own use, or more likely, converting it to additional biomass production, which is what will be happening in the adjacent building. And by doing that, we would be able to generate additional external sales revenue. The other risks are not as big as that, but are notable. And those are primarily the fact that this arrangement does require some incremental increases in operating costs, primarily through the cost sharing, which could put pressure on budgets. To manage that, I think the college has done a very good job of establishing a financing plan for us, for all the cost share components. The cost share has been structured so that it relies heavily on non-cash commitments rather than hard cash commitments. Additionally, as I noted earlier, there are other financing options and levers at our disposal to help manage unforeseen negotiated negative impacts to budgets and cash flows. And so with that, I will turn it over to Vice President Kramer for the final wrap-up.
Thank you, Mike. And I am terrifically grateful to my colleagues on the business side of the house for all their work on risk mitigation, and they get paid to make conservative projections and think about risk. I actually get paid to be optimistic and take risks. So I'm just going to lean into that a little bit as we wrap up here and say, no Manufacturing Innovation Institute has failed. No Manufacturing Innovation Institute has actually had its award ended. They have all extended past their original periods, those that reached the period, some of them. And which is the division within the Department of Defense that manages these Manufacturing Innovation Institutes is a critical component of the Department of Defense. Frankly, it's just too big to fail. So I think there's also that when we think about risk mitigation. And I guess I'll come back to my enthusiasm. The leadership of the university believes these agreements are reasonable, in line with our expectations. And on behalf of my colleagues and the president, we recommend the board approve the Biomed Institute research collaboration and related agreements. We look forward to discussion and answering your questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Vice President Kramer and other, other presenters for that very, very clear overview. So to my colleagues, before we move to the discussion, I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution related to the Biomed Research Institute and Production Facility.
So moved.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Let's turn to the discussion. We all know the drill. Please use the raise hand feature or alert OBR staff if you wish to speak and Brian, if you would just help me keep track.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Regents Beeson, McMillan, and Simonson with hands raised.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Steves. Regent Beeson, why don't we lead off with you?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm I'm pleased to be able to start some comments here. I want to thank all the presenters and all the people who've done the work associated with this project. This is one of the most exciting projects I've seen in my now 12 years on the board. And I want to also call out the folks that worked on the Army's Future Command Center in 2018, because even though we lost on that bid, this is really, that was about the relationship building that led to to, to this project. And that effort was so strong and so effective, the relationships were developed that resulted now in this, which, which you've made possible through your, your work. I really appreciate the risk outline. And as a banker, I'm thinking all the time about worst-case scenarios. And you know, there is some risk there about an empty building. But I think, as Vice President Kramer said, I think that's limited. The you know, one of the things that on the opportunity side, that I want us to look forward to and beyond the project. I know there's a lot of work associated with getting this project going. But we have a moment right now with Congresswoman McCollum, who's Chair of the Subcommittee on Defense at the Appropriations Committee, starting now. So all appropriations for the Defense Department, and there's a lot of money that goes through the department that's not weaponry and it's not armed services. And I've talked briefly to the President and Mr. Kramer about this, but I'd really like us to to step back and look at non-NAH, non-science foundation opportunities of the federal government in light of the fact that we're probably going to have a large stimulus bill. And we are, you know, we have to think of ourselves as a federal government headquarters university now. And we only have, I think, one person in Washington. I know we've got contract libraries, but this is an opportunity to really think bigger about our federal government presence, the payback, there'd be some costs. And I'd like the President to send back to the board, and that isn't this week or next week, but put some thought into what our strategy could be around this opportunity. So if she would do that, she can respond when I'm done here. The other, I had a question to the, to the Dean, Dean Forbes. We are, there are some fundraising opportunities. I know they're not budgeted. Can we name the building and keep those proceeds around the building naming and other parts of the building? Or how is all that contemplated in the agreements?
Yes, thank you, Regent Beeson. We've not specifically discussed to this point building naming or philanthropic contributions of that kind. We focused just up to now on private sector contributions in terms of major equipment for the building as gifts. But I think you raise an interesting point that we need to think about. I'm, I guess, off the top of my head, I wonder, because of the nature of Biomed, whether that would cause any issues we'd have to think about, whether it was named or not. I'd have to give that some more thought. But we are certainly discussing and planning for additional funding opportunities, either through gifts and/or additional grants to help us with the cash flow, et cetera.
Thank you. Mr. Volna, it looks like his hand went up. Or somebody want to answer? I would like the President to sort of respond to my sort of larger Washington strategy.
Yeah, President Gable, would you like to take a, take a shot at Regent Beeson's comment on the Washington opportunity?
Yes, thank you, Chair Powell. Regent Beeson, we actually have been ramping up Washington DC strategy, changed our physical presence in DC, have full-time people there now and have been working very closely with our delegation and have had some real success with that, just being one of the grandest examples, but some of the others particularly in partnership with the members of our delegation who are chairing committees, such as Congresswoman McCollum, who you identify. But I'd be very happy to give you and the rest of the board a memo summarizing those efforts, some of which have been reported to you, but it's been a while and some of which are probably new or deeper since the last time you heard from us, so that we would be delighted to do that.
Okay, thank you, President Gable. Regent Beeson, other, other questions or comments before we turn it over to the next Regent?
No, thank you. Congratulations, everybody.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Regent Beeson. Okay, let's move now to Regent McMillan.
Thank you, Chair Powell. Wow, this is a lot of work and a couple comments recognizing that work, which is underscored by the complexity of the array of agreements here, but I'm very appreciative of, of the kind of work that's happened over holiday periods to compile a set of transactions like this, that's very forward-looking and yet has to embody a fair amount of uncertainty. And as Mr. Volna and Mr. Franz and others have said, is risk-balanced, and I think it's appropriately risk-balanced. I've got a couple of questions, but first of all, just thanks especially to our legal team. The privileged memo that we got was extraordinarily helpful and sort of putting all this into components and then tying those components together. And it's from some of that material that I've, that I've created a couple of questions here. I don't know if they're for or Dean Forbes or for interim Vice President Horstman, but my, my risk-reward questions boil down to this. And I'm starting with the premise that I think this is an appropriate set of risks for a very, very outsized reward opportunity, and it makes it worth doing it, but that doesn't mean I'm moving past my governance, what I feel my governance obligations are to understand those risks. And, and there are two, there are two areas. One, people and that seconding agreement or seconded, secondment agreement. Always expanding my vernacular as a Regent, and secondment was not an agreement I'd ever, ever heard of that before, but somebody talked to me a little bit about types of employees as we grow from 20 to 40 to 50. I think that's the way the progression's envisioned. You know, who those are, if they're faculty PNA-type employees. Just, I don't need any detail, just give me a general sense of the type of academic employee that would end up being seconded. I did note appropriately that you put the leadership, the COO, and I guess it was the CAO, a couple of roles there that we told Biomed they need to keep. But talk to me just for a second about those types of employees and in the following context. I don't expect this to end, as Professor Kramer said. Vice President Kramer said it'll, in all likelihood, continue on. But at the end of five or seven years, are these employees that will naturally find their way back into our system and have academic roles that we can, we can put to use. And then I'll ask my second question, and maybe somebody can jump in on that, too. The same type of question about the building. I don't have a very good sense for what happens inside the new building like this, but it's a big-ticket building. And if things didn't go on after year five, six, seven, hopefully, you know, it'll be year 20 when we're talking about this, but is this the kind of thing that fits naturally within the College of Biological Sciences framework? Is that the sort of, is a facility like this something that you would naturally want to have anyway? So those two questions, people and facility.
And Vice President Kramer, maybe you can, you'll help us direct Regent McMillan's questions to the right person.
Very happy to do that. I think Dean Forbes is the appropriate person on both questions, actually.
Okay, Dean Forbes.
Yes, thank you, Regent McMillan. Let me start with answering your question about the building. So as you know, we've had our biotechnology resource center has been in existence for about 35 years. And one of the reasons we decided to expand capacity and build a new building for it was because it's been so successful and the amount of small-scale manufacturing requests coming to the BRC has been growing. So if you think about our BRC and Biomed, they do more or less the same thing, just at different scales. So BRC is a very small-scale kind of pilot, proof-of-concept type of fermentation. And Biomed will do the same types of things at a slightly larger scale, but, but pre-manufacturing level scale. This, what we, they fondly refer to as the Valley of Death, right? Because the scale-up processes are not linear. It requires some innovations. So yes, very much what will go in on, in the building is very much in keeping with CBS's activities. And I'm really confident that if Biomed were to leave, for whatever reason, we would have no problem either taking over the space ourselves and doing larger-scale biom manufacturing or leasing it out to a private company. I mean, you heard in President Gable's introductory remarks, biom manufacturing is not going away. And I think, you know, we've already had some conversations with a couple of companies who have expressed interest in co-locating either in or near campus to take advantage of this biotech ecosystem that we're creating. So I think very much what's going on in the building, which is basically microbial fermentation, is very much in keeping with what the college does and our mission. To answer your second question about the kinds of employees, there are some existing University of Minnesota employees that will be seconded to Biomed either partly or entirely to do Biomed's work. And then there are brand-new people that haven't been hired yet, which we'll do searches for, that will be, again, hired as University of Minnesota's employees, but seconded to Biomed, to do the work for Biomed. There are basically, I think I can categorize them into two broad categories, and maybe Ken Horstman can finesse that a little bit, but there will be the administrative people providing administrative support services to Biomed, but a lot of those people will be the tech- to Biomed, but a lot of those people will be the technical staff that are going to be working in the new facility, actually doing the microbial fermentation and, and developing the innovations for the institute. The initial grant or award from DOD includes about 22 people that is part of our award, and we expect that to grow. The, the conservative estimates expect that number to grow to about 50 in the next, during, over the next five years. I don't know if you want more detail than that, and, and if so, I might call Ken to help me out here.
Regent McMillan, does that, does that get at your questions?
It does. It does. I guess the only refinement I'd add to it is, are we thinking of faculty-style people? Or are these going to be research professionals and, you know, just, just that little bit of additional? The answer on the building was perfect, spot-on, and I think I understand the people side of it too. But if we're, and I'm not that I'm hostile or concerned about it, I just wonder if, you know, if we're making tenured style hires, that's just a little bit more of a commitment.
Dean Forbes, do you want to take a shot at that?
Yes, please. At this point, we have, we've committed one faculty position as part of our cost-share commitment. It's a faculty line in the Biotechnology Institute. We have wanted to hire someone working in the microbial fermentation space anyway, and we've got a retirement coming up, and we have used that faculty position as part of our commitment. The only other faculty position at this point is one of our CBS faculty who will be, who is actually the PI of the University of Minnesota portion of the project. And he will be allocating a portion of his time as one of the technical officers of the project. Those are the only faculty members at this point that have been committed.
And Dean Forbes, if I could maybe interject a question of my own, I mean, the way I understand it is that this is a, it's a research facility, but it's also a pilot scale or maybe intermediate-scale production facility that, as you, you talked about the Valley of Death, I mean, there are many people around the country who have ideas for biologically-produced substances that don't have the, the manufacturing technology to actually produce those. So much of the work and many of the people will be engaged in actually producing a prototype from a biomanufactured products. Is that the right way to think about this?
Yes, and, and it makes me also think back to something that Chris said earlier. There will be a lot of opportunities for our existing and future faculty to engage with Biomed and collaborate on some of the innovations, because this isn't just about production. It's about developing innovations in biomanufacturing. And so I could see if this grows as we expect, it might be very exciting for us to think about investing new faculty lines in these research areas that could leverage the activities, the, the R&amp;D activities going on in Biomed.
Very good. Regent McMillan, any other questions or clarifications?
Well, all I'd say is I, I am very supportive despite significant risk associated with this. As I said, the, the opportunities here and the upside are, are very, very, very significant, and I will be supporting.
All right. Thank you. Regent Simonson. I think you're on mute, Regent Simonson.
Thank you, Chair Powell. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, good. Okay. I too am very, except for all the reasons that were as far as the research, the education, on and on, non-job preparation, that kind of thing. And I wish it would have been started a few years ago. I was on a Zoom call yesterday with the Office of Technology Commercialization and a researcher that has a patented technology. I think that to move ahead before the facility's ready, but it would really, I just have a, a basic you know, they have been covered, but I didn't really. Looking at this overall, I, I'm assuming we're going to be dealing with zoonotics and foreign animal disease issues on, on the bedside and on and on and on. As far as regulatory compliance, how is that going to be handled? The Biomed, I assume, I see this as very technical and specific and working with you know, the FDA, USDA and other. So it's just, I don't know if Vice President Kramer or Dean Forbes.
I think that's probably Dean Forbes. How about it, Dean Forbes, zoonotics and things like that? Will this send, enter into that realm?
Gee, I was going to punt that to Chris Kramer, but
Oh, okay.
It's okay.
Given I own some of the compliance shops, I, I am very happy to, to answer that, Chair Powell and, and Regent Simonson. Essentially, the, the embeddedness of Biomed within the university is deliberate because Biomed wants to take advantage of the infrastructure, employees to be managed with our HR policies. And that applies actually to all the compliance and regulatory aspects that will apply to work they're doing. And so, for instance, the biosafety aspects are subject to the same, same sort of oversight and regulation as any of our researchers who are subject to that. So in essence, I guess I would say, you know, it is our building and we will be doing the same sort of health and safety monitoring oversight as we would be doing for any of our other buildings, even, you know, this one just happens to have a, a less C in it.
All right. Regent Simonson, any follow-up?
Hey, thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Regent Shu.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Regent Shu.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I these sentiments, that's very exciting. Thank you for the work. Questions regarding, I'll just start out with the safety one. I think you guys were talking about a second ago. I'm just concerned about what happens if 20 or 30 years from now, we find out people are getting cancer or something much like the 3M situation with the Scotchgard and other chemicals and their plants. What, what kind of what kind of things are in the agreements to protect us from that? I, I noticed that they have to be insured, but the insurance amounts are fairly modest. And if you could just give me an idea of what we're looking at there.
All right. Vice President Kramer, who would you like to address that question?
Chair Powell and Regent Shu, this sounds like a good question for a member of our Office of General Counsel. So I might actually ask Doug Peterson or his designee to address the sort of liability and insurance aspects.
General Counsel Peterson.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to turn this over to Brent Benrude in a moment. But as a general matter, there are several sort of ways in which we've tried to mitigate risk. One is through the insurance provisions, and you'll see in the agreements there, it's contemplated that the insurance will be tiered over time. So it, it contemplates that, you know, as Biomed grows, there's going to be a constant sort of assessment of that sort of insurance that Biomed would require. Secondly, there are indemnification provisions that divide up sort of the liabilities so that it corresponds with essentially control. So to the extent that Biomed by design is operating as a independent entity, it also, you know, carries with it a fair amount of control and direction of the employees. And so the indemnification provisions are geared so that the liability is matching up with the control as much as possible. And then, you know, there's a, another aspect to this question that involves sort of the availability of sort of the usual protections the university had on a day-to-day basis, kind of managing our own folk, which gives us the assurance, as it does throughout the university, that sort of the usual university protections that come from our being good at managing our people will also help sort of mitigate the, the possibility that, you know, something will, will befall everybody. So with that, I'll, I'll call upon Brent Benrude, who may be the most appropriate person to talk further about other protections that are, that are built into this.
Okay. Thank you, General Counsel Peterson. So I think, or Associate General Counsel Benrude.
Great. Thank you, Chair Powell, Regent Shu. I, I don't have a whole lot to add. I think General Counsel Peterson did a good job of addressing the main points that have been built into the agreements to address this. There's sort of three main areas that he touched on. One, the indemnification language, which is, tries to do a very careful job of allocating the potential liability to the entity that is actually controlling the activities. And so in this case, the agreements make it very clear that the seconded university employees are doing work for Biomed at Biomed's direction. And because of that, Biomed is the entity that's responsible for negligence that might arise from those activities. The second thing is the insurance, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a moment. And the third thing that General Counsel Peterson referenced is we've tried to, as much as possible, maintain and confirm the protections from the Minnesota Torque Claims Act and other protections that the university as a government entity has with regards to liability. We've captured those concepts in the agreements and tried to make sure they're maximized to the extent possible. On the insurance issue, the one thing I'd point out is there is sort of a three-tier system for the insurance in the agreement. And to understand that, it's important to understand that initially Biomed's work will be almost exclusively administrative. So they're going to start out in the Cargill Building in a relatively small administrative suite, doing administrative work to get the institute set up. And that's the initial period covered by the insurance that you see in the agreement. And so that insurance, which does have relatively small limits, is intended to ensure administrative functions, which is pretty much all that will be going on at that point. After that, there will, Biomed will move into some limited lab space in the Cargill Building where it will be doing some initial lab work. But again, it's going to be a relatively small space. I've heard maybe around 1,500 square feet. And so the lab activities will be likewise fairly small. So that intermediate insurance period does cover at that point some lab activities, but they're limited. And again, the, the limits are fairly small. At the point that Biomed is to move into the larger permanent facilities where the larger-scale work will happen, the agreement says that at that point, the parties will go back into negotiations over appropriate insurance levels. And it's anticipated that those levels will be significantly higher to correspond to the larger-scale work that will be happening in the permanent facilities. So those are the things that we've built into the agreements to address these risk issues.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Benrude. Regent Shu, back to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for those answers. So I guess we don't have any, my understanding is we don't have any idea what they're going to be doing in these spaces. So let's just say, for example, there's a little bio warfare type research being done in our facilities. We won't know about it. And the possibility that something may go drastically wrong in the future, and this might be in the future where Biomed as an entity doesn't exist anymore. What protections are we going to have beyond the fact that Biomed being a third party is going to have some type of insurance coverage for some period of time, but may not actually be around when we figure out that we've got some problems? How do we, we don't have any protections beyond that, is my understanding. Is that correct?
Chris Kramer, you might again want to start this and then maybe turn it over to lawyers, but leave it up to you.
Well, sure. I would just mention that the United States has forsworn bio-warfare as an activity. So that, that might be going one step too far, but I think the general tenor of the question, of course, remains, and I return to General Counsel Peterson for that.
Well, as we're kind of pressing on sort of the nature of the insurance, any, any sort of tail that may apply to it, maybe Myron Franz or Mike Volna would have some additional kind of thoughts on what they would anticipate by way of, you know, future insurance conversation. But also I have in mind that, Regent Shu, when you say that we wouldn't know what's going on, I mean, the work is going to be done by our seconded employees who continue to be University of Minnesota employees. So I think we are going to be, you know, ourselves be doing that work. So I trust that will also allow us to kind of keep a pulse on what the activity is and, and make sure we're taking the appropriate precautions along the way, health and safety and otherwise. But it may be that either Mr. Franz or Mr. Volna would have another perspective on this question.
Thank you. Senior Vice President Franz or AVP Volna, do you want to comment, have additional comments on Regent Shu's question?
Let me just, Chair Powell and Regent Shu, let me just say, one of the things that you bring up is this, the dynamic nature of this venture. And, and you're right, it is dynamic in the fact that is the current set of insurance risk mitigation factors sufficient? And if not, and if we come to some area where we feel like that's not happening, and we have a plan, not only for the, for the current year at that time, but the future, then we will, we will obviously advise the board, but we will, we will you know, be cognizant of that. I'll let Associate Vice President Volna talk a little bit about how our insurance process works.
Thank you, Myron. Regent Shu, members of the board. The, it's a good question that's been posed. It's a little hypothetical. The way that we, the way that we typically would approach things like this is to obtain an understanding of the risks, assess options that we have for addressing those risks and taking the right action. In this case, we will begin assessing those risks as the Biomed organization matures and moves into that, closer to that tier-three level that, that General Counsel Peterson and Brent Benrude mentioned. At that point, we'll have a better understanding of what they intend to do. We'll have a better understanding of the facility, structure, costs and so forth. And so at that point, we will begin negotiating with them over what that tier-three package looks, looks like. And we would certainly take into consideration the risks and things that Regent Shu has pointed out. And to the greatest extent possible, we will manage those risks either through assessing what options do we have if those reflect on us, or what do we need from Biomed if those ultimately become risks that Biomed needs to, Biomed needs to cover? So we are aware of those. We will manage them. It's a little hard to specifically say at this point how we will respond to them without knowing what some of those risks actually represent.
Thank you, AVP Volna. So it, it strikes me, Dean Forbes, that it might be helpful, you know, in the context of Regent Shu's question, you know, which, you know, sort of looks to the future, what might happen. Maybe if you can just remind the board of the sort of the general uses of biomanufacturing technology today. I mean, I'm not, you know, obviously things will change, but just to give people a feel for the landscape.
Thank you, Regent Powell. Let me start by saying, at this point, there's absolutely no plans to do any sort of bioweapons research. And my, I would have to look back at the, the building plans, but I don't believe the building as we are currently envisioning it has the level of security that we would need in the lab spaces to do that kind of work. So, I mean, again, following all of the compliance procedures that the university has to follow protects us to a large extent from things going on in the labs that we would not want or allow in any of our university laboratories. or allow in any of our university laboratory spaces. So at this point, I mean, the biomanufacturing that we're talking about is in the non-medical space. So it's producing things like enzymes, proteins, things for the agriculture sector, possibly in the future, things like coatings. It's a lot of different products, but they're mostly for industrial uses, not any kind of weapons uses.
All right. Yeah, sorry. Yeah. Thank you, Dean Forbes. Regent Shu, is that getting added? And maybe time for one more question from you, and then I want to move, move on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask another question regarding financial, the financial aspect of this. It's not clear where the cash is coming from and where it's going. Is it all going to be CBS, CBS-type money coming in? And I understand that CBS will be funding the building. But where do the, where does the cash go when it's, if it's beyond the costs? I mean, is there a profit here? And if so, where does it go? How does it affect our budget?
Thank you. Senior Vice President Franz, you want to take that or direct that question?
I'm going to ask Vice President Volna to step in and talk a little bit about that, the cash flow match you're looking to, because I do think that they're coming from a couple different directions. Mike?
Yes, thank you, members of the board, Regent Shu. We have not sat down yet and worked out some of the mechanics of this, but my, what I am envisioning is that for a period of time, probably close to this five-year period, we will sort of put a box around this financial activity and sequester this financial cash flow, so that what's happening is captured and is sufficient to cover the debt service and the operating costs and those kinds of things. I fully expect that if this MII goes as planned, that there will be quite a bit of additional upside revenue that will occur. For example, if this MII really becomes as big and robust as we expect, then we start to see other players in the industry co-locating and such. There will be enormous opportunities for the college to seek and receive grants and sponsored projects and stuff. All of that revenue ultimately would go into the college. But as it relates to this activity, we do have to treat it a little bit uniquely and make sure that the cash flow from the seconded employees and the services sufficiently covers the debt service. So we will be sort of holding that in a sequestered manner to make sure that, first and foremost, we're addressing that.
All right. Thank you. Regent Shu, does that get at it?
Yeah, it does. But it really doesn't tell me how much we're, I mean, basically, this is an investment by us, and we're investing cash upfront. There's going to be some revenues to us. It's not clear how much we're actually going to be putting in, where that's coming from. And then it's not clear where the money is going to end up going beyond, you know, year, year five or six or whenever. I don't even know where the break-even point is at this point on, so.
Now, AVP Volna, do you want to respond or clarify any of those points that Regent Shu just made?
Thank you, Chair Powell, members of the board, Regent Shu. As I said earlier, this analysis really is just focused on the revenues and expenses and cash flow related to the seconded employees, the professional services in the facility. You're correct in that we didn't try to capture some of the other revenues and cash flows that might spin off from this. It's, it's a little challenging and pretty speculative. I think what you see on the paper really does represent what we expect to be the actual revenues and cash flows from this set of agreements. As far as the break-even, I would have to check on that. I don't remember what the numbers look like on the spreadsheet. It projects out several years beyond this. I would, if you'd like, I can get back to you on that.
All right. Thank, thank you, Regent Shu. We'll move on now to Regent Swigum.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I think most regions I see this as being a really big deal for the university, but a really, really, really big deal for the state of Minnesota. It's even better for the state of Minnesota. If I could, I know in the memo we got from Doug last night on page seven, and also in, in Mike's slide, they got to a number of $273,000 that is a positive cash flow at the end of five years. That in itself is probably underwhelming. That's underwhelming, at least in my view it is. But the, the big thing is the, the earning capacity of additional research grants that will come in and flow about other companies that will follow and come forward, you know, about the opportunities for our faculty, our research assistants, our graduate assistants. That's the really big thing there, I think, not the $273,000 positive cash flow. So my question, and first of all, I want to thank the entire team for what they've done here. Thank you all. Mike, Valerie, Greg, you know, all of you, thank you very, very much. But my question is this, from a former life, whenever I'd go to a groundbreaking or ribbon cutting or something like that, we always like to talk about jobs, you know, jobs in Minnesota, the number of jobs. So Chris, I'm going to turn to you. You're smiling. I'm going to turn to you. Give me your crystal ball. A crystal ball of what could happen, the range of jobs that could happen for Minnesota, not just the university, for Minnesota. Are we talking tens of jobs, hundreds of jobs, or thousands of jobs potentially in the range? I'm not going to quote you at 1,279 jobs or anything like that, but give me the range to increase my enthusiasm for this.
Vice President Kramer.
Chair Powell and Regent Swigum, I am a theorist, so I love it when people ask me to speculate in terms of log units. I think what I would say to you, of course, is there's a timeline here, and it'll take a little bit to ramp up. But there is no question in my mind, we will see substantial innovation and startup activity associated with biomanufacturing because of Biomed. So startups generate tens of jobs in their first two, three, four years. And then, of course, those that are very successful grow. In addition, we do have robustly to be introducing new product lines, expanding their activities. That, too, probably is tens of jobs. So, but you add all those tens together, and I think we reach the hundreds. I'm not quite ready to go to the thousands yet. That is probably a little bit further down the road, maybe a decade, maybe two decades. But the projections on biomanufacturing that have been made by sort of, you know, respected consulting firms are big in terms of their numbers. I cited four trillion, which I think is McKinsey. So we have a great opportunity, certainly, for many of those jobs, as you point out, to be here in the state of Minnesota.
Okay, just quick follow-up then, Mr. Chairman. Chris, I'm going to quote you when we go and propose this to Governor Walz and the legislature and how important this is for Minnesota, that we have the potential of 997 jobs. But hundreds, I can use the word hundreds.
I am as confident as one can be in such a projection.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Regent Swigum. Regent Kenyanya.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, colleagues, and then presenters for the discussion. I just had two, most of my questions have been asked and answered. So I just had two follow-ups to a couple of things that have been said. The first, I think, is for Dean Forbes. You were discussing, I think in response to Regent Shu, if I'm correct, bioweaponry. And what I heard is that you don't, you know, it sounded like you don't anticipate that kind of activity. And that, you know, you suggested the facilities couldn't really handle or facilitate that kind of activity. But I guess my, my question is, is that, what I did hear is that that's been discussed and somehow, like, is that in the contract? Have we overtly discussed that that will not happen? Or is this just our anticipation? And then one question after that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Dean Forbes.
Yes, thank you, Regent Kenyanya. As, as Chris mentioned earlier, that would mean that the DOD was violating international conventions, which I think we, we think is, is pretty unlikely. And if the DOD were going to get into bioweapons, the idea that they would do it at University of Minnesota, I, I think is pretty unlikely. So I'm confident it's not something that's even been discussed. I mean, bioweapons, they're not on the table. That's not the kind of, of activities that will be going on in this building. I can be quite confident about that. We'll be making much, much less harmful products.
Thank you, Dean Forbes. Regent Kenyanya, yes.
And so that's in our contract with, that's in our agreement with them, that that specifically could not happen, right?
No, it's not.
May, may I maybe jump in on that?
Yes, please. Yes, yes.
General Counsel Peterson maybe back me up. The contracts do say that all parties will follow all applicable federal and other governing laws. So I do think that the 1972 Biological Weapons Convention that the United States is signatory to apply.
Okay. One more, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you, VP Kramer, Dean Forbes, for the answer there. My other question, I, I quite frankly, don't remember who was speaking on this. But we were talking about, specifically in regards to the facility, I think that's been identified as one of the risks, obviously. And someone mentioned, someone mentioned that there are protections to, to prevent, you know, early termination or something like that, that would then leave us with the facility, which obviously, you know, we've identified there may be alternative uses, you know, that we can certainly repurpose that, too. But I was wondering if someone could speak to those protections specifically.
All right. Thank you. Chris, I think that might be you initially.
I think I'm happy to redirect Chair Powell and Regent Kenyanya. I think, actually, I'm going to kick that to OGC. So I'll ask General Counsel Peterson.
There are notice and other provisions to give us a little wind-up time protection in the event that would occur. I'll again defer to Brent Benrood, who can be more specific in terms of how those protections play out, particularly in the secondment agreement. I think that's where we have this risk that you're talking about. And that's why Brent's well-suited to give you a deeper dive on the one-year notice and exactly how it plays out in, in that agreement. So Brent, if you wouldn't mind, again.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Powell, Regent Kenyanya. If we're talking about winding up in the event of termination, just to be clear, I want to make sure I'm answering the right question. The, the agreement does anticipate that if there was a termination, there would have to be a specific amount of notice given. And then it, the presumption is that costs incurred by the university related to a termination of the agreement by Biomed would be shifted to Biomed. It does recognize, and that would include costs related to the employees as well as other costs. At the same time, the agreement does recognize that Biomed could be limited by its federal obligations in terms of what it could use its money for. So the vast majority of Biomed's money comes from the federal government in the form of grants. And there are federal regulations that say what that kind of money can and cannot be used for. So as part of this winding up process, there would be an analysis and discussion about what money could be used for what purposes. So there are sort of two things that happen. First, the notice period means that we would have a fairly good amount of time to try to work through issues as far as what our liabilities would be in the event of a termination, opportunities to line up, other uses for buildings, other assignments or uses for employees. So by putting that time period in, that helps us quite a bit. And then it does, in addition to saying Biomed is presumed to be responsible, there's an obligation that the parties would meet and confer and sort of work through how the wind-up would work. So that's the way it's addressed in the agreements. And I hope that I've answered the question, or been responsive to the question.
Thank, thank you. Regent Kenyanya, does that get at it?
It does. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Regent Mayron.
Yes, I just briefly want to say, I recognize there are risks involved here. I think are those with boots on the ground, whether it's the OGC or administration have done a terrific job to address those risks as best as they can. I'm very excited about this because of the opportunity for the university to generate alternative sources of revenue and to create and generate jobs for those within the state of Minnesota. So in terms of meeting our mission, I'm thrilled with this. And I think the benefits greatly outweigh what risks there are with this type of endeavor. And I think we've done, the administration and, and General Counsel and our higher counsel have done a terrific job to try and mitigate those risks as best as they can. So I just wanted to say thank you and that I will be supporting this proposal.
Thank you, Regent Mayron. Mr. Steves, I see no other hands raised. And unless you, you disagree, I would suggest that we call the roll.
I agree, Mr. Chair, no additional hands.
All right, let's, let's call the roll.
On the resolution related to Biomed, Regent Anderson.
Yes.
Regent Anderson votes yes. Regent Beeson.
Yes.
Regent Beeson votes yes. Regent Davenport.
Yes.
Regent Davenport votes yes. Regent Herr. Regent Herr.
Yes.
Regent Herr votes yes. Regent Shu.
Yes.
Regent Shu votes yes. Regent Kenyanya.
Yes.
Regent Kenyanya votes yes. Regent Mayron.
Yes.
Regent Mayron votes yes. Regent McMillan.
Yes.
Regent McMillan votes yes. Regent Rocha.
Yes.
Regent Rocha votes yes. Regent Simonson.
Yes.
Regent Simonson votes yes. Regent Swigum.
Yes.
Regent Swigum votes yes. Chair Powell.
Yes.
Chair Powell votes yes. Mr. Chair, there are 12 in favor and zero opposed.
Very good. By a vote of 12 to zero, the resolution related to Biomed Research Institute and Production Facility is approved. And I think it's a very, very exciting day for the university. Let's move on next to the consider approval of appointments to two important boards, the Fairview Health Services Board of Directors and the University of Minnesota Health Clinics and Surgery Center Board of Directors. A change in personnel in our Senior Vice President for Finance and Operations necessitates our approval for new appointment to these seats. President Gable, would you elaborate a bit further and present your recommendation, please?
Thank you, Chair Powell, members of the board. The change in senior leadership, as you identified for the rest of the members of the board, we bring before you today a recommendation that Myron Franz represent the board on, represent the board of regents on the respective boards that will be brought before you. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, President Gable. Colleagues, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments as recommended.
So moved.
Is there a sec, is there a second? Moved and seconded? Any, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Regent Shu.
I was, I was just curious as to why this wasn't done sooner. Is this just some point in time related to the Fairview bylaws? Or is, is there a reason why we delayed?
President Gable, you want to take that one?
Yes, thank you, Chair Powell. Regent Shu, as part of the transition of the Senior Vice President for Finance, the outgoing Senior Vice President for Finance, Brian Burnett, was to serve in these roles during the transition period to allow the incoming Senior Vice President for Finance time to onboard and learn. And then eventually, after the transition period, take over these roles. That transition period is being accelerated by virtue of Dr. Burnett obtaining another position.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I, I see none from my end of the telescope. Mr. Steves, do you have any?
I'm not seeing any hands, Mr. Chair.
All right. Let's, let's call the roll then.
On the appointments to the University of Minnesota Clinics and Surgery Center Board and the Fairview Health Services Board, Regent Anderson. and the Fairview Health Services Board, Regent Anderson.
Yes.
Regent Anderson votes yes. Regent Beeson.
Yes.
Regent Beeson votes yes. Regent Davenport.
Yes.
Regent Davenport votes yes. Regent Herr.
Yes.
Regent Herr votes yes. Regent Shu.
Yes.
Regent Shu votes yes. Regent Kenyanya.
Yes.
Regent Kenyanya votes yes. Regent Mayron.
Yes.
Regent Mayron votes yes. Regent McMillan.
Yes.
Regent McMillan votes yes. Regent Rocha.
Yes.
Regent Rocha votes yes. Regent Simonson.
Yes.
Regent Simonson votes yes. Regent Swigum.
Yes.
Regent Swigum votes yes. Chair Powell.
Yes.
Chair Powell votes yes. Mr. Chair, there are 12 in favor and zero opposed.
All right. Very good, Mr. Steves. So those appointments are approved. There being no additional business before the board. Thanks to every single one of you and to those who joined in on the live stream. This meeting is now adjourned.